The Board of Education is called to order. Present we have Ms. Pitko, Ms. Lieber, Mrs. Gerber, myself, Mrs. Vitale, Mr. Cummings, Mr. Asa, Ms. Jacobson, Mr. Peterson, Mr. Dwyer, and Mrs. Maxine Cannelly had a prior work commitment and are absent tonight. I ask you all to please rise for the pledge. Ms. Lieber, will you lead us in the pledge?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation, under one individual with liberty and justice for all.
If any members of the public would like to come and give comment to agenda items, come forward at this time. Please leave your name and address for the record. Okay, seeing none. Board members, oh, we have one. Come forward, please, and state your name and address for the record.
My name's Greg Bosch.
You can have a seat.
Is this would fall under fill pile testing? Specifically, I want to talk about Stratfield Elementary School.
I apologize. I'm very sorry.
My apologies.
Can you hear me okay?
Again, my name's Greg Bosch. I live at 470 Jackman Avenue. I'm here to talk about fill pile issues, Stratfield Elementary School, and the test results that were released earlier in the week. I hope that falls under one of the agenda items.
It does. Just so you know, there is a time limit, so if I don't...
Okay, I'm sorry. I was not aware.
No, that's okay. I'm just telling if I cut you off, I want to apologize ahead of time.
Out of an abundance of caution, we tested. Test results revealed Stratfield has a playground with a cocktail of nine different chemicals, some of which are carcinogens, that exceed residential remediation standards by seven times permissible levels. Benzo afyrene, BAP, is one of the most dangerous of those found on this playscape. The facts show that Stratfield's playscape is one of the most polluted in the district, with nearly twice as many chemicals exceeding RDEC values than any other playground we've tested. Indeed, there are more chemicals at higher concentrations at Stratfield than there are at Gould Manor Park, where remediation is scheduled to occur. When I pointed this out to a member of this board earlier today, I was told that some believe the decision to remediate Gould Manor is political. Shame on anyone that tries to turn this into a political football. This is about the safety of our children. It is irrelevant that there is no record of fill from the Julian pile having been brought to this playscape. It doesn't matter where these carcinogens come from. And suggestions that these chemicals might be explained by an old playground built from pressure-treated lumber aren't based in fact. Pressure-treated lumber doesn't explain PAHs and petroleum products present in the soil on this playscape. What does? Spoils from roadwork and ground-up asphalt. And that sounds a lot like the fill pile to me. Regardless of where these chemicals come from, they are just as carcinogenic and even more harmful to developing children. And that's why I rise tonight. My daughter just began as a Stratfield student. She's a kindergartner. My son will join her there two years from now. My children will play on this playground for the next eight years. And my wife and I are deeply concerned. I've been told by members of this board that the school administration consulted with licensed environmental professionals, TIE and Bond, as well as local and state officials within the Health Department, that's Mr. Sands Cleary of Fairfield and Ms. Margaret Harvey, an epidemiologist with the state, before making the decision to open any of the fields or playscapes. For the past five days, ever since the day the testing data and decision was released, I have been asking for a written report from any of these individuals, departments, or organizations, that the playground at Stratfield Elementary is safe. I am unsatisfied with Ms. Harvey's conclusiori letter.
Mr. Bosch, I'm sorry.
I'm unconvinced that woodchips are the best possible solution for protecting our children, and no one I've spoken to from the town can explain the science behind Ms. Harvey's conclusions.
Thank you for your comment.
Will I have an opportunity to finish my statement at the end?
No, you've reached your limit for public comment today, but thank you for taking the time.
That's unfortunate, because there's much more information that I've learned over the past few days that I feel should be shared with this board.
If you have something in writing, you can submit it to the board in writing.
The rest of my statement will be submitted to the board this evening. Thank you.
It is not on the agenda, but we actually have one of our student representatives here tonight who has a report. So can I have a motion just to add an item to the agenda? Mrs. Gerber, seconded by Mrs. Lieber, all in favor? Motion passes 7-0. Ms. Phillips?
Hello, everybody. Hi.
How are you?
Can you just, your name and school for the record?
Yes, I'm Lily Phillips, and I'm here to talk about Fairfield Ludlow High School. Just going over some recent events. We recently had Constitution Day, which is on Tuesday, September 17th. It's on that day because it's the same day that in 1787, the delegates to the Constitutional Convention signed the document in Philadelphia. So to celebrate, AP government classes created a Constitution chalk walk, which is a literal walkthrough of our nation's principal document. So it was a really great learning experience for students all around the school to go over and understand, you know, a crucial part of our history, but also the structure of our government today and modern politics. And last Friday as well, a significant group of students accompanied by FLHS teachers and staff staged a walkout in the name of climate change. The movement is a global effort led by students around the world, and it's a really great thing to see our politically active students at Ludlow. So, yeah, thank you.
Thank you. Any questions for Ms. Phillips? Thank you for taking the time to prepare that and for coming tonight, and we'll officially see you in the coming weeks at the table.
Thank you for having me.
Thank you. Okay, moving on. Update on environmental testing at school fields. Mr. Cummings?
Good evening, everyone. I'd like Mr. Papa George just to come up, because there may be some questions directly to him as part of this report. But essentially, I have an update on three of our sites. So let me start with Stratfield. We have received before the board meeting tonight a letter from the environmental consultants, TIE and Bond, which explains their reasoning, and we will post this letter online tomorrow on our field's website. But essentially, with the letter from TIE and Bond and from Jim Olson, who's their consultant that's been working with both the town and the district around the field testing, he describes their recommendation that the mulch barrier at Stratfield is sufficient to the concerns that have been raised around the testing results, or what the testing results revealed around that playscape. So we will post that letter as well. It confirms what we had already heard from Meg Harvey from the State Department of Public Health. A couple other pieces of information there. We have determined that in the past, that playscape was the site of a playscape, or an older wooden playscape, but prior to that, it appears that it was a site of a parking lot. And so that would explain the compounds that were discovered there. We looked at the site today. One of our staff members went out to the mulch pile today underneath the playscape and determined that there's two feet of mulch there, and underneath the mulch, there's actually a rubber membrane that protects, that sits below the mulch and above the soil. So again, the reasoning behind Ms. Harvey's recommendation, the reasoning behind TIE and Bond's recommendation, has been to prevent the direct soil contact from anybody from reaching the soil. And again, it is their recommendation that that protection that we have in place is sufficient to that need. I mean, I want to emphasize, nobody, we all take very seriously any of the results we find, and we react very deliberately to those results and cautiously to those results. We are very much in service of those who know best around those and who can provide their recommendations in this. And again, in this case, we've received the same recommendation from both the state as well as from TIE and Bond, in working with Mr. Cleary and with our own staff and Mr. Carey around, in making the determinations of what we're going. So I don't know if you want me to stop before I go to the other sites and hear any questions about this?
Yep. Any questions about Stratfield? Ms. Pitko?
Through the chair to Mr. Cummings or Mr. Papa George, I don't know who can answer this. How often do we change the mulch at the playscape, let's say at Stratfield?
We change the mulch. The mulch is updated every summer. We then, we have a playground inspection that's taking place, I believe, in October, and we make it part of our building inspections, part of our duties, to make sure that that mulch layer is maintained. Mr. Papa George can speak in more depth about this, but when the winter, late winter, early spring, we go back out and reapply mulch as necessary, rake it back up if it's gotten compacted. So it's a constant source of oversight even before this issue, because that mulch layer is important just if a child were to fall from the material, you know, from one of the playscapes.
So how often do we change the soil underneath the mulch?
Well, you want to answer that one?
We don't change the soil under the mulch. What we do is every year, we add mulch to all the playgrounds, and we pick one playground that we deem is in the worst condition, and we actually, working with the town, we dig out and remove all the mulch and bring all-new two-foot mulch in. That just happened this last summer at Holland Hill. We did both the lower playgrounds over there.
So I'm trying to, and once again, I don't know who this goes to. I'm trying to understand the point of testing the soil, if it came back and we weren't going to change it out, we weren't going to remediate it.
Why do we test it? I think out of caution to see what we had. If the numbers, if we have determined, or if the test had determined, that there are greater concentrations there than what we found, then we would have to think, or we would have to consider other sources of remediation. I think that's, one of the things that I think is not clear is when the term remediation is discussed, I think to some degree, people see it as a single thing, a single process, where rather, it can describe a range of possibilities that could be done to address any soil conditions, or whatever conditions might exist. So part of the caution in this, and this explains to some degree, why we haven't released Jennings, for example, right now, because those concerns did not allow that, they're saying that we might have to do something more than mulch at this point. But again, they're taking their time on that one, because they're not sure yet what we should do with those. And this town is dealing with this at different sites as well.
I think the feeling is that we tested positive for something, and the concern is that we're just leaving it there. I can understand the concern of, well, we know there's something in the soil, why aren't we doing anything to remediate it? Like you said, they don't know all the definitions of remediation, but moving forward, I would be concerned if I had a child that went to school there knowing there's something in the soil. I mean, maybe I need more clarification. Like, we tested it and we came positive, but we're not doing anything to remediate it.
Yeah.
Mr. Asa?
So if you go back and look at all of the meetings that we've had over the last several months in different town bodies and forums and everything, this has been discussed at great length. And I think just to try and piggyback on what Mr. Cummings is saying, is as Mr. Cleary and others from TIE and Bond have said, in some situations in a field, it could mean putting a topsoil cover and sod. In some situations, it could be meaning putting down mulch. Every situation is different, and from the way I understand this, and based on this letter here today stating that it appears that there was a parking lot there at one point, so that would explain, the asphalt fragments, thankfully explain them, right? So in this situation, as has been said all along, there will be situations where it could be a barrier. So the way I understand it, and correct me if I'm wrong, is the barrier in this case is the two feet of mulch, and then today, they found that there is that rubber membrane there under the mulch, so it's actually, sounds to me like it, I don't know if that's an extra protection or not, but to say that we haven't covered what remediation is, I don't follow your line of logic there, because it seems to have been discussed at nauseam to me over the last couple of months. So in this case, it seems like the remediation is mulch, hence it's there, which is why we're not doing anything. At Jennings, it seems like, I don't know whether it extends or whatever, but they're continuing to work, because they're saying that it's quite possible that it could come back, that let's say, it does include a broader scope of mulch or whatever. We don't know yet, because we have to wait for the experts to tell us. But I just wanted to make that point, because I don't follow what you're saying.
No, I just think it needed to be said. It was given the idea that we were just leaving it there. We weren't. We did have a plan, but the plan was not coming across as if we were remediating the issue of the contaminants there. Do you get what I'm saying? If you're a parent of that school, you believe we're just covering it up. You don't actually think that we're doing something about it.
Well, I understand, but I think you're blurring what remediation is. So I think, instead of causing further confusion, I think what we're trying to get across here tonight, which is what I understood, was that the form of remediation in this case would have been to add mulch. It was already there, so that's why we're not doing it.
I'm just trying to clear exactly what you're saying. That's why I brought it up.
There is a map also of the site just in your packets. I know that you probably have all seen it online, but if you look at the map, I think you can even see that there was a blacktop. I'm suspecting that the blacktop was there first. They needed to build a playground, and that corner of that square, of that blacktop, was probably, you know, I'm somewhat blind, was broken up and a playground was put there. I'm not a scientist, I'm not an expert, but in terms of sitting through these meetings and hearing that there are different definitions about remediation, that in this case, given the levels and the guidance that we have received, and the fact that there is a rubber mat separating the soil from what will now be two feet of mulch, the exposure is less, that children are not going to be in contact with this soil, because it is under a rubber mat and under two feet of mulch. And now that we know that the soil has these contaminants, we can be more diligent, not more diligent, but assess the maintenance schedule for that playground. Vigilant. That maybe the mulch needs to be assessed, the depth of the mulch, before spring, and we let the kids out, to make sure that we are maintaining the one to two feet of mulch. And that is possibly a new course of direction for the maintenance crew. Is that correct, Mr. Papa George?
Currently, what we do, we do have, early spring, as soon as the snow is off the ground, we have our landscaping contractors go out. They rake up and take measurements to make sure we are meeting the minimum depth. And then, over the summer, before school starts again, we add additional mulch, because it does break down over the years. So we are always continuously adding mulch, so that we don't go below the levels. They're recommending, I believe, Ty Bond recommended, the one foot to one and a half foot, and we're, at most sites, we are maintaining a two-foot clearance for the mulch. We've actually gotten some parents pushing back, because the swings are hitting the mulch, so we have to shorten chains now, but they are there.
Mrs. Gerber?
Yeah, I just have a question about the membrane that's over the dirt. How long a lifespan does something like that have? Is it, well, first of all, do we know when it was put there?
We don't. I was actually, we were actually surprised to find it, so we were assuming it was put there when the initial playground was put into play.
Which I believe was 2011?
I believe it was, there was a playground there in 2011, but it was completely removed and replaced, so I believe that is when that membrane went in.
So 2011, so it's eight years old. So I guess, is that the kind of thing, at some point, when you're doing the yearly maintenance, I guess with this and with any playscapes, I suppose, do you, in addition to cleaning out all the mulch, would you then replace?
We will start, we have not done it in the past, but what we will start doing is when we do dig out, like we dug out Holland Hill this year, when we dig out one school a year, we will start replacing or installing, if there is no membrane. But the ones, all the ones that Ty Bond did their testing on, they were coming across some type of membrane, and he did take photos of it and say that it looked to be as intact, from what they could tell.
So it's in good shape?
Yes. From the sites that they were finding it, they found it to be in good shape.
Okay, thank you. Do weeds come through this mulch? I'm just speaking from my own, having a place that in my backyard with mulch, and not having rubber, but having fabric, the weeds pretty much pop up all the time. I'm curious to know.
The fabric and the rubber is actually there to control the weeds. The weeds we get in the playgrounds are light-rooted, so they're very easy to pull. They only root in the mulch. They're not digging into the dirt and creating deep roots that make them hard and rough to pull out.
Okay. Any other questions about Stratfield? Okay. Moving on.
All right. So let me talk about Fairfield Ludlow. We had tested Fairfield Ludlow. One of the, a concern had come up around, and this is specifically, I'm sorry, the courtyard across from the Library Media Center. A concern had come up, because there was, a sinkhole had appeared there evidently several times in the past few years, close to the headmaster's office along that part of the building. And the fact that it had been filled with, by the DPW, raised a concern of what actually had gone into the sinkhole. So we had that area tested, and while we're not able, and there's no evidence that this was done, that something occurred from the fill pile, we have no, in other words, if you remember, some of the, in other incidences, there were receipts of deliveries that showed from the fill pile between certain dates. There's no evidence of that linking it to Fairfield Ludlow, but some contaminants were found in the soil in that area that's close to the headmaster's office. And the belief is that back when that was Mill Plain Elementary School, that was not a courtyard. That was actually part of the building, and it was the site of the custodian room and the boiler room. So what we're dealing with is, it appears to be anyway, contamination from the 40s and 50s, before that area of the building was knocked down and replaced with a courtyard and the building was expanded. The town, the results of the testing, the testing results, excuse me, indicate that that area will need further testing to determine the extent of the remediation. So what the remediation consists of has not yet been determined. The initial testing sites have shown that there's something there that requires further testing, and that testing would essentially require them going out from the test sites they found, where they found the contamination, to determine how wide an area might be impacted, and then determining, based on that, what might be the best remediation plan. However, because there's an area in there, in that courtyard, that is covered with blacktop, which students use, utilize, we have an understanding from both the town and the State Department of Public Health, that the blacktop essentially serves as a remediation barrier to the soil, and as long as students don't go into the soil, don't go into the grassy areas, they can continue to use the courtyard for lunch and other things. Because again, this is not an airborne issue, this is an issue of direct contact. So we're at a, I met with the staff at Fairfield Ludlow today after school, and shared with them what the issues were. There was essentially one question that I had from the staff at this point, that was about, because that area is somewhat sloped, if it's possible that some contamination had gone downhill, as it were, and that's something that the testing will determine. But we are, we believe we can open that up, cordon off the area, the grassy area, so keep people off of it. According to Mr. Hat's, students really don't go in the grassy area anyway, they tend to eat lunch on the blacktop area. But we'll make, we can open that up, keep students off the grassy area, and they can have access again to the courtyard, because they'll be in an area where they're on a remediated barrier, essentially, from the soil. So that's where we are right now with Fairfield Ludlow, and waiting for more determination from the town, TIE and Bond, and the Department of Public Health, what might be the remediation efforts there. I have just questions on Fairfield Ludlow.
Any questions on Ludlow? Okay, thank you.
Okay. The final site is McKinley. We had said to everyone last week that the McKinley playscape was closed, and I think in this case, it's important that you look at your map of McKinley that you have at your seats. We closed, we closed the, there's two playscapes in the immediate front of McKinley. The one to the left has, what is that surface called? What's the best?
Rubber.
Rubber surface.
Rubber, okay. A rubber surface. And the one to the right of that is the one that we were concerned about. That is a mold surface. But a further examination of the results show that the actual testing sites on that playscape were not a concern. The actual concern is to the, if you're looking at the building, to the right of the building, outside what I, there's a patio area outside the Library Media Center, for example, on the edge of the soccer field area, there's a small area there that two testing sites determined, and on your maps, they're S-101, excuse me, S-102, right? Those show areas of contamination. So that's where the problem is at McKinley. We roped off that area today, based on what the town has advised us to do. That area, again, is going to be now considered for some type of remediation plan. The good news out of this is that, because there was no concerns found at the playscape at McKinley, we can open, we can open actually both playscapes at McKinley in the front of the building. So I spoke this afternoon with Ms. Ginggrave and told her that this was what we had determined, and she was very happy. And this, again, we'll make an announcement, we'll send this out to the McKinley community tonight, including the testing results, so they can see this. And that area that is now cordoned off will remain cordoned off until we know what the plan is.
Any questions about McKinley? Okay. Thank you.
You're welcome. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Papa George. Okay, adoption of policy 5144.4, Students Discipline Physical Exercise and Discipline of Students. Recommend a motion that the Board of Education adopt policy 4144.4, Students Discipline Physical Exercise and Discipline of Students. Kind of a motion? Mr. Asa, seconded by Mr. Peterson. Mrs. Maxine Cannelly is not here. Mr. Peterson, Ms. Jacobson, would you like to make any comments about this policy?
I don't have a copy. Should I have a copy?
Is there a copy here?
We got it last week. This is just for action tonight.
No, this is a very simple update. It was brought to us by staff, pretty much just putting the current practice into policy, and we didn't get any questions or public concern or anything like that from either the gen, so it's really just a simple update.
Does anybody have any questions? This is a voting item to the public. Does any members of the public like to speak to this motion? Okay, seeing none. Back to the board. All in favor? Ms. Pitko, Ms. Lieber, Mrs. Gerber, Mrs. Vitale, Mr. Asa, Ms. Jacobson, Mr. Peterson, motion passes 7-0. New business approval of educational specifications for Roger Sherman Elementary School. Recommend a motion that the Board of Education approve the educational specifications for Roger Sherman Elementary School as enclosed. Ms. Pitko, followed by, seconded by Mrs. Gerber. Mr. Cummings, do you want to just give us a quick update of why we are seeing this?
Yes, I believe it. Mr. Papa George, I don't know if you want to return to the stage here, but that is essentially, as I understand the issue, that the stage in the APR was initially part of this phase and has since been removed. Is that correct?
I don't think it has to do with the stage.
Oh, I'm sorry.
What you're looking at is the ed specs, page one, the change was the superintendent's name.
That I should know.
And some revised dates on that page. Ed specs, page two, first paragraph, we deleted a section that said that we are going to upgrade to all codes, fire, police, electric, and that is not the case. We are upgrading areas of the building that we're currently working in, so we're not doing all codes. So they wanted the wording changed and removed the word "all." And then the last part you're looking at is the lockers were removed from the ed specs, because the state said it's not a reimbursable expense, so they wanted it removed. So those are the, really, the three, four changes you're looking at.
And to Mr. Cummings' question, being that the ed spec has some updates for the common core spaces, area of assembly seating 550, and the student lavatories, which most probably are not happening in Phase III, will that be an issue when we go to the state for this?
As of right now, no. These are the requests that the state had when they reviewed the ed specs.
Okay.
These were the only requests.
And just to remind the board, the lockers were installed this summer.
And just to remind the board, the lockers were installed this summer, and some of the upgrades to, they started the life safety code already. That work has already been done, some of it. Okay. Any questions? Ms. Jacobson?
Just on the stricken section on the building codes, life, safety, and fire codes, I see that the whole piece has been struck here. If the concern is just the word "all," is there a reason why we're not rewriting this in a way that indicates that some is being done, but not necessarily "all"? I mean, it just reads as if we're doing none to me at this point.
I can, I can actually, I can look into that. I don't have the answer for you. We were going by what the state was recommending the wording be. That's why we came up with that wording.
Are any of those items reimbursable by the state?
Uh...
The ones that we are doing?
Life safety are reimbursable.
So, does that pose an issue that we're striking the entire sentence then in terms of our reimbursement if it's not in this ed spec?
Again, unfortunately, I would have to look into that for you.
It might be an important point to clarify, just because if we're getting reimbursement on something or seeking reimbursement on something that's not actually in the ed spec at this point, it might, I understand the clarification that we're not doing "all," but I think striking all of it, especially if we're seeking state reimbursement, maybe there's some different language that we might want to do. It just seems a little bit of a concern.
Yep. Definitely look into that.
Mr. Asa?
Just to be clear, this is coming from Sal Morabito's conversations directly with the State Office of Reimbursement, and this is a formality to move the project forward and for state reimbursement, knowing that we always get reimbursement for those items. Just, so, if we didn't approve this tonight, what happens?
Unfortunately, I don't know the answer to that. That is correct. These do come directly from the conversation Sal did have with the state. Sal unfortunately could not be here tonight to answer the questions. He kind of gave me a cheat sheet for you guys, and that was what I was reading from when I gave you your answers. I would have to find out. I don't know, I believe it would delay the reimbursement process if we did not approve the ed specs tonight.
Okay. I mean, this is, these types of things have come before us many times, and Sal has gotten up there and sometimes talked about stuff that quite honestly, I don't even know what he was talking about, but I trust him. So, in this instance, I'm going to trust what Mr. Morabito is suggesting, and if we need to make a change again, I will urge you to discuss that with him and bring it back to us, as Mrs. Jacobson's mentioned. But in the essence of not slowing anything down or risking any kind of reimbursement, I would suggest that the board approve this.
Any other comments? Okay. Yeah, Mrs. Gerber, sorry.
Um, well, just to just follow up what Mr. Asa just said, so I guess, would it be possible just to double check with Mr. Morabito? And should there be an issue, any revisions could be brought back to us at our next meeting, which is in two weeks, so, or two and a half weeks? And there wouldn't be any slow, two and a half weeks isn't going to make a difference in terms of this project or anything like that? So, if there were just the clarification, and if for some reason, it would make sense to have that language put back in, or part of the language put back in, we could do that and approve it at the next meeting without there being an issue. Okay. Great. Thank you.
Do you think Mr. Morabito is reachable? Do you want to, if we possibly just table this for now?
I could attempt to do so. He had another prior obligation tonight, so I don't know what his availability would be.
Okay. I am along the same thinking as Mr. Asa and Mrs. Gerber, just to move forward on this, based on conversations with the Building Committee, that it really was guidance from the state on what they wanted to see changed in their meetings with the Building Committee and Colliers. So, I'm comfortable moving forward right now, and if needs to come back to us, it'll come back to us. Okay. Seeing no other comments, we can go to the public now. Any members of the public like to speak to this?
No, just, um...
If we could just get, regardless whether we don't need to take action next meeting, if you could just provide an update to address these, that would be great.
Matt O'Gurick, 287 South Benson Road. I know this is comment, probably not comment and question, but are these available to look at tonight? Like, is there a printout of these revisions available that we can take a look at?
It's on the agenda.
They're in the agenda?
It's online.
Okay, thanks.
Yeah.
Anybody else? Okay. Seeing none, back to the board. All in favor? Ms. Picko, Ms. Lieber, Mrs. Gerber, Mrs. Vitale, Mr. Asa, Ms. Jacobson, Mr. Peterson, motion passes seven zero. Financial review of 2018, 2019 fiscal year. Mrs. Monzel, Mr. Cummings, do you have anything to say about this, or should we go right to Ms. Monzel?
No, we go right to Ms. Monzel.
Okay. All right. So, 1819's history. I thought I'd take you down a little, a brief walk down memory lane, because I had to do it myself doing the report. You remember, last year was the year of the givebacks. In first quarter, the end of September, we were already projecting a deficit of 850, 850,000 in staff replacement. And that's too early in the year to do a full-fledged projection, but that number in and of itself was alarming enough where we were compelled to take action, and we asked the schools for a giveback. They gave us 10% of their available balances, and departments gave us back any projected balances that they expected at the end of the year. So, that totaled just over a million dollars. We also held about 365,000 in capital, just to be on the safe side. By the second quarter, that deficit had risen to, for Personnel Services, had risen to 1.2 million fully staffed for the, you know, the entire year. Up until that point, Special Ed had held its own, it was balanced, but between the givebacks and other projected balances, the budget was balanced. Third quarter, Personnel Services, the projection had improved, so it was just over 530,000. We were also more comfortable projecting a balance in health insurance, but by that time, Special Ed had turned into a deficit situation of about 670. So, at year end, you'll see in the, the column report with the transfers that we'll go over, the balances in Personnel Services changed slightly at the end, because we had taken the Medicaid revenue that we received. We were originally applying it to Personnel Services, and we moved it down to Pupil Services. The Special Ed deficit increased, and in support expenses, we purchased anything that we possibly could for instructional resources, you know, to the extent possible. Some of those resources were more appropriately classified as capital, so they were purchased down in the capital area. So, this, you've, this is something you've seen before, but we changed it up a little bit in that we gave the givebacks. We showed the, the second column is the projected end of year balance on 625. And then, the actual balance, the column three is the actual balance without the transfers that you had already approved, but the actual balance on 630. The fourth column is the, the balance on 731, which is our actual hard close. Column five are the transfers that you had already approved. Six is the balance after those approved transfers. So, column seven are the actual end of, end of year transfers that we had to do. So, virtually, we got it, the balance down to nothing at year end.
Line 39, pupil, it says, "other contracted charges and miscellaneous." What would fall under that column?
The mail services. Late buses are in there.
Any other questions?
Sure. I do.
Mr. Asa?
One, I want to say thank you, as we do generally this time of year, for working so diligently on balancing our budget and making it work. Obviously, we would love to have more money and be able to put it into our buildings and programs and everything, but I think you did a very good job working with what we had. Based on this, springboarding to next year's budget, looking at where we are now, knowing our contractual obligations, so with staff, support, healthcare, and whatnot, are we starting to formulate a base point or a basis point of where we're kind of coming out the gates at without anything else?
Yes, we're thinking about 2021. We're preparing the preparation manual, so we've been talking about, okay, what's the message going to be? You know, I did a very preliminary calculation based on budgeted numbers for staffing. We don't know, you know, what the actual is yet, but just based on budgeted and the contractual increases that we have in place already, that we know of, anticipating, you know, we're going out to bid for transportation. I had to put in an estimate for that. Health insurance, we know that there's a new law that the Fairfield County, each county is going to have a, an adjustment to the state partnership, whatever the base increase is, there'll be an adjustment based on county now. That starts, starts October 1st for any new members, but July 1st for us. So, I had to project that in. So, we're coming up to over 3.5% just with that. That's nothing else.
It's nothing else.
No, no other increases.
Okay.
And actually, more closer to 3.7%.
And that's with an estimate on the transportation, which I know is just an estimate, but that doesn't take into consideration any other contracts we have, like grounds maintenance, fields maintenance, that are all coming up. That hasn't been incorporated yet, has it?
No. That's going out to bid, too.
Okay. So, we're going to be looking at some work. Okay. Thank you.
Any other questions? Thank you, Ms. Monzel. Let the fun begin. The first read of the Fairfield Public Schools student calendar 2020, 2021. Mr. Cummings?
Thank you. So, we, we have developed the first draft of the 2021 school calendar. Couple things at play in here. As we developed it, we looked into the, while the state has backed off on the, the past expectations around a common district calendar, or excuse me, a county calendar, we still rely very much on the CES calendar, which has not yet been approved. It's in draft form as well. But we rely on that because of shared services with CES. You know, we have students who attend CES schools. We have, we're going to be relying on Bridgeport to adjust or balance their calendar as well because of the aquaculture program. So, these are all things that we try to take into consideration as we're developing our calendar. We also looked at the fact, just a couple of dates in here. Labor Day is as late as it can be in 2020. It is September 7th. So, that pushed back the start of school, potentially could push back the start of school, but with the caution that we don't obviously want to get out too late. So, we, we looked at an idea of putting the teacher professional days in the week of August 24th, specifically the last three days of that week, the 26th, 27th, and 28th, having a weekend, and then having the students start on a Monday rather than what they've started in the past, which is on Thursdays. This would give them essentially five days prior to Labor Day. And then, and then that would allow us to get out on June 14th, which is a date we feel comfortable about. It's a Monday. It gives us several days that week if we get pushed back by snow, but we really, as we know, we don't want to go much later than that, just because of temperature concerns and heat in the buildings. We had initially looked at September 18th as Rashashan, and it, it's, but we had checked on that. It is not the holiday. The holiday is actually the 19th. So, you'll see on the calendar that we would exclude evening activities from the 18th, Friday, the 18th, because the holiday will start at sundown, obviously, on the 18th. Other than that, we maintained the early release days. We kept a February break of a long weekend, the Monday, excuse me, the Friday and the Monday, and an April break of April 12th, with Good Friday being the second. We initially had looked at the idea of running April break on April 5th, but that seemed awfully early to us. So, we moved it back one week. And so, there's a separation between the Good Friday long weekend, and then there's five days of school, and then the, then the April break would be proposed, start in April 12th. So, that's essentially where it is. For the most part, everything we, well, everything in the current calendar, the early release days, the conferences, we pretty much lined up where they are this year.
Ms. Jacobson?
Um, where to begin? So, the first, I'll just start in August. Normally, up until last year, we had placed the sixth and ninth grade orientation day, as noted on the calendar, and I noticed that as of last year, we stopped doing that. I was wondering if that day could be added to the calendar for families, so it's just clear, or if there was a particular reason why it was taken off that you might know of?
I'm not aware of any reason why it was taken off.
Okay. And so, looking at us starting on a Monday with five full days on August 31st, would that mean the sixth grade and ninth grade orientation would have to be on that Friday, the 28th, before?
It would. That's when it's been now. It's been the day prior to the day students return.
Right. So, it's, I guess, I find that a little unfortunate, just because I feel a subset of our families, and I, and I really would like to hear from fifth grade and eighth grade families, because maybe they don't care about that. But having them come back on a Friday, the last weekend of the summer, I just don't know why we wouldn't do Monday and Tuesday instead. I mean, we're already breaking our kind of schedule, starting on Wednesday, Thursday, but I have, I don't know, I think that that's something that's a concern to me, out of the gate to discuss going forward.
Sorry, can you, can you repeat that?
Okay. So, sixth grade and ninth grade orientation is always the day before everyone comes back?
No.
So, I would want that on the 31st, and everyone start Tuesday, if we're going to break from our Wednesday, Thursday, which I can understand. I mean, it's late, and Labor Day's late, but...
Well, the last day of school, that was a good team.
Yeah, I can jump to that, too. And I feel like we just went through a whole process this year where we didn't have a half day on a Monday in order to save a lot of money, but yet, we're going right back to having, I mean, that might not be the last day because of snow days and whatnot exactly, but I'm just saying, it's like, we just kind of had that conversation about not ending school on a Monday. So, that was my second note on that. But yeah, it would move to the 15th to next point. And then, have we ever not had April break, not connected from Good Friday, disconnected from Good Friday? We have?
Yeah. Sometimes, sometimes Good Friday is towards the end of March.
Okay. It's not, I just was curious. I didn't remember that ever being the case. And then, there was one other thing. February break, the 11th and the 23rd, those two days, was there ever a thought of kind of dropping that 23rd and just making the 11th a full day, and that makes February break just that one day longer for everyone?
Say that again, I'm sorry.
So, February?
Yeah.
We have two half days, right? The 11th and the 23rd?
Right.
February break starts the 12th under this draft? Was there any thought of making, dropping 23rd and making the 11th a full day off, so that February break would just be that one extra day longer for families, and we would save a day in February?
If we did that, I'm just playing this out, so that would push us back then. If we took your first suggestion... If we took your first suggestion, that would push us to the 16th?
Well, would that necessarily be the case, if you're having to?
We'd have to, yeah, we'd have to, we'd be giving it to teachers another full professional day, which would be...
Could we take that from June 1st?
My concern with the June 1st date is this. We had, this year, we took full advantage of that day after, after Memorial Day to have teachers engage for half the day on the school improvement planning. It was the first time we got a collaborative school improvement plans put in place by our faculty. And then, over the course of summer, we brought teams in to flesh out the plan and have it ready for the start of school. My concern would be that if we, we would no way be ready to engage in those conversations in February. So, that's, that's why that, that day towards the end of the year is really important, too, for planning.
Sorry? Yeah, sure.
And I think it's also worth noting that last year, we had four early releases in March, and instead, in February, now we're having two in February and only three in March, so...
No, the days are staying the same. I mean, I understand that.
No, they're not. They're not. They're changed.
Well, they're changed, but I mean, the number, the total number.
Yeah, yeah.
The total number is the same.
No, no, no. But when, when we say last, you know, last year, the 23rd actually wasn't an early dismissal day.
Right.
Just a point of clarity.
Yeah. I was just curious if we could extend the February break by one day and collapse that, so, but those are just some of my thoughts on that, out of the gate.
I have a question that piggybacks on that.
Ms. Pitco?
I know from conversations last year that people were concerned about the number of half days, the early dismissal days, and if my math is wrong, there's 14 of them built into the calendar. So, I think if Mr. Cummings could just go through, how many are actually parent-teacher conferences versus professional development? Because there's also two full days built in during the actual year for teachers. And I know that we're going to be putting together a new district improvement plan, so why is that time so necessary for the staff?
The, the teacher professional development days?
Well, there's 14 early dismissal days. How many of those are actually professional development time?
We have six early release days, early dismissal days for kindergarten, I mean, excuse me, for pre-K5, for conferences. We have, so, and then I'm just looking, I think in middle, we have, middle and high, we have four related to conferences, if my math is right. We then have an additional day for the high school, for, two additional days, excuse me, for the high school, for testing, the PSAT day, the SAT day, that we have linked up with professional development as well. What I would say around the, the professional development, the, the focus in the past few years in the district has been a focus about building teacher capacity. It's, it's really two things. Increasing teacher capacity around the work we're doing, that would include professional learning in any type, particularly around instructional matters. It allows departments who are working on curriculum revisions time to do that. I would say, today, we had an early release day. I was out in two of our middle schools and one of our high schools, watching the work that was going on. In two of the schools, there was follow-up work to the school improvement planning process that had begun this summer and the, the plans that were in place. Another school was working on making connections between staff and students, social, emotional learning. And then, at both middle schools that I visited, as well as at the other middle school, there was conversations starting around the new middle school schedule and gathering teacher concerns and ideas about how to make that better. I would say to you that each of the days that we send students home early to engage the staff, we have a commitment that that time is valuable to our staff. We need that time. If we don't have that time, what's going to happen is we're going to have to, have a budget impact on summer work. But even if we were to compensate for that time with summer work, it doesn't deliver the on-the-time support for teacher learning and growth that happens during the course of the school year. So, for example, what would, things we're trying to do with the elementary this year is improve our SRBI processes in math and behavior. We've deliberately timed out through the course of the year, those early release days to coincide with both the election day, as well as other Tuesday afternoon time that we already have, to build a syllabus essentially of professional learning experiences, timed to the SRBI calendar. Those are things that we try to do and to put in place, so the learning is immediate and timely. There's really no other way to, to provide our teachers the support they need to move forward in their, in their roles.
Thank you.
Ms. Asa.
And I'm sorry, I just want to add one thing. We are very conscious of the, and we talk about this all the time, we preach this all the time. We're very conscious of the impact that this has on families, and it really is a, it's a matter of value to us that, that the time that the teachers have is not only valued to them, but is worth the time and the impact that it has on families. We take that, that role very seriously.
Ms. Asa.
The one thing I don't see on here, and I don't know if it's just referenced in past calendars or not, but what about the SAT day? That's usually, is that just normally listed on the calendar as reference, or does that affect the calendar at all?
It's an early release day, and it should be on here. I think that that, we had that...
Sorry, I didn't catch it earlier.
The PSAT.
PSAT.
We have that.
October 14th.
Yeah, but there is, there is a SAT day as, as well.
But it's not early dismissal.
Well, the state gives us two possibilities for it, and we, we selected this year, I believe we selected the April date, or maybe we had to avoid the April date. I apologize, I forget what, which one we picked it, but we'll have to, we'll have to get that on there.
Okay. But that, we'll, we'll be able to get that on there, so it doesn't affect anything else that we're looking at.
No, it doesn't, no.
Okay. Thank you.
Mr. Peterson.
Thanks. I just want to make a couple of comments, and I'll, I'll be brief, actually. I just want to say that over the past couple of days, I, I got very excited. I tore the calendar apart, because I, I saw that there might be an opportunity, and I, I'm sorry, I subjected to a couple of individual members of this board to my unrefined thoughts. I, I thought there would be a possibility of returning to a full week February break. It is a thing that I think parents would be happy about, and I, there's absolutely a way to do it. However, a lot of consideration went into what I'm going to say now, and I think that it's, it's useful for me to go over this every year, because it convinces me that the space is just not there. And we may be able to revisit this topic at a point where our schools are air-conditioned from top to bottom. Yeah, I, I did pull weather data as part of my thinking about this, just to, just to be clear. But I want to, I want to let the public know that I gave it a good try. And, and as, and as the chair knows, I, I was prepared as of 24 hours ago to storm ahead with it. But upon kind of more sober reflection, I've decided that unless there is a, a large, you know, voice on this board to do that, I'm not sure that we are prepared to have that conversation.
Does anybody want to have that conversation?
There's your answer.
Knowing that it would mean starting earlier or extending later, and knowing that we don't have air conditioning in all of our buildings. Okay, seeing, Mr. Peterson?
No, but in fairness, there are pluses to it.
There are absolutely pluses to it, and I think that probably every single person sitting at this table has spent some time with the calendar, trying to find a way to make it happen. Ms. Lieber.
Through the chair, I would be interested in you making a case. I would be interested in hearing it, and starting a few days earlier?
It's 95 degrees in the elementary schools.
The, the theoretical end of the, the longest day, in a, in a scenario where we began on the last Monday in, in August, the earliest the year could begin would be August 25th, and the latest that it could end would be June 25th. And actually, the June 25th dates historically are cooler by a marginal, marginal amount than the early, early April. So, I could, I could have, I'm happy to have a private conversation with you about the data that I pulled. But again, I'm not sure, I'm not sure that the hunger is there in this group. It's, I think it's premature, and we can revisit it at some point, where I'm sure we are past the point where I know your, your, your passion for getting our schools air-conditioned has been realized.
Ms. Jacobson.
I'm just following up, perhaps some historical context on why we pulled February break to begin with. I mean, besides the weather, obviously, but wasn't it also, mm-hmm? Well, yes, PD, but also, I believe, there's a certain, there's only so many days, and not to focus this on what happens in March and April in our state, but a certain amount of content has to be covered in order to best, you know, have our students prepared for APs, whether it be S-Bacs, whatever, all of those things. So, teachers are responsible for covering all of that material before that begins to. So, there was multiple kind of reasons, but I, I hear you, you know, in, in terms of that. But I don't know if Mike had any thoughts on that. Go ahead, sorry.
Well, having been on, on the board that actually voted to get rid of February break, which was something that we discussed at great length, this came on the tail end of a few years where not only did we go to almost the end of June, but we actually lost the majority of our April break. Now, of course, many people had made plans, which meant that every day, we actually hadn't made plans in April, but, so my son was going to school, and it was on the earlier side, but every day, there were different combinations of kids in, in class, because some people had made vacation plans at the beginning of the week, or at the end of the week, or maybe just a few days in the middle of the week. So, I can tell you, nothing happened that entire week. I mean, four out of the five days were taken out of the April break. So, there was that. And again, I mean, at that point, I don't think the, the content was as important as it is in middle and high school, but, but of course, I can only imagine what it must have been like for the high school students. In addition to that, trying to take a final exam when it's 95 degrees in a classroom is a little difficult. I would also say that there seems to be a trend growing, that continues to grow each year, of many colleges having orientation meetings, not even the last week in June, sometimes the third week in June, to the point where we did not, I don't know if anyone here recalls, we did not want to go any later into June, because we were getting emails from students saying, "I will miss my graduation if you have it, you know, the third week in June, because I have my college orientation then." So, that is another trend, on top of the weather trends, on top of the curriculum trends, on, on top of the losing April break trends with weather being what it is lately. So, I think we're kind of a little lulled into thinking that maybe we can make a go of it, because the past couple of years, I looked, and we actually haven't had many snow days. But I recall the year when we had Sandy and Nemo in the same school year, and, you know, that certainly kind of threw, like you mentioned, things. And that was after we'd gotten rid of February break, but, so just a little more context to that decision.
Thank you, Mrs. Gerber. Mr. Peterson?
Yeah, I would just, I would just add to that, that in, in my survey of towns in, in the region, it seems that very few continue to have both a full week April and a full week February break.
Thank you. Any other thoughts on the calendar? Ms. Asa?
I just have one more, and I say this every year, and I kind of piggyback on Ms. Pitco's comments. I would love to see discussions continue on how we can at least broach the subject of some outside-the-box thinking on the conferences, especially at the elementary level, and trying to reduce these number of half-days, because it is, I understand the necessity to have conferences, but I just ask, moving forward, if there's a way we can kind of try and brainstorm, and maybe the answer comes back and says there's no way to, other way to do it, but I would, with you as a new superintendent, ask that it's something that we look at this coming year for the, for the next time we're discussing this. And the other question is around middle school conferences. So, I'm, I'm not there yet. I'm at the elementary level with my kid, but, so the middle school conferences are here in October. It looks like all three of them? Is that it? Three days of middle school conferences in October?
Pre-K, yes.
Okay. So, I, I know in the past, and last year, we discussed, and I, I went at more of the elementary school, but is there, is there a true necessity for three days at the middle school level? Like, would it be possible to make one of these eighth or 13ths, you know, a PK5? Just food for thought.
Before we move on, I want to get back to Ms. Jacobson's point about the first day of school, in terms of conferences, and if we end up moving, I mean, not conferences, orientation, for those going into middle school and going into high school. If, do you have, you want to move it to Tuesday? Is that your suggestion?
Anywhere except Friday. I mean, yeah, I mean...
Okay. So, if, for argument's sake, it gets moved to Tuesday, September 1st, what would that do to professional development day? So, then it would be two and one for the professional development day? And would that be, would that create problems for the PD? Or in terms of the work that's done?
No, I don't, I don't think it would. Well, I'd have to look at this. I think what we'd have to do is, which we, we have to do anyway, is look at what we've been using for the last few years as the three-day schedule, and see if that schedule need, would need to be adjusted around a weekend. That, that last day, you know, again, it's, it is an orientation day, so if we kept that as the orientation, would we change up what happens on the first two days? In this case, it would be the 27th and 28th. We'd have to, we just have to be cautious that in terms of any work that's happening either at the building or department level, nothing was interrupted. I think, I think we could make it work.
I mean, and it's okay if you say that's not, I'm asking just right now, and for the discussion, that if that's problematic, there's another option of bringing it, you know, to the third, and then having it similar to what we're doing now, and having the PD on the Monday, Tuesday, Wednesday, students come back on the, for the full day, on the third, and then it's Labor Day. I mean, that'll push the end of the school year.
Yeah, that would be my concern. We push us back to the 17th, and only give us a day cushion there with that weekend. So, I, I, I don't, let me look at this a little bit. I think it's, I think it's possible, but I want to talk it out with some of the curriculum folks and the principal, maybe a few of the principals.
Okay. And I, to Ms. Jacobson's point about, you know, maybe it's not an issue, maybe families would have no problem having orientation on the 28th, but I figure we'd kind of run the scenarios if we want to address that point, both from public's point of view and for staff's point of view. Okay. Any other comments on this? Moving on, approval of minutes. Recommended motion, the Board of Education approve the following meeting minutes. August 27th, 2019, regular meeting minutes. September 10th, 2019, special meeting minutes. September 10th, 2019, regular meeting minutes. Motion, Mrs. Gerber, seconded by Ms. Pitco. And any discussion? All in favor? It is unanimous, 7-0. Superintendent's report.
Well, I gave some of it already when I talked about the early release days today. We, we, as I said earlier, we, we, the schools engaged in a number of professional learning activities, primarily at the middle school. One of the components of that, well, each school in some way handled their school improvement planning process, but at the middle school, there were conversations with each of the staffs, building-based, around where we are, an update on where we are in the middle school scheduling process. There was some examination of a proposed schedule at this point to gather staff feedback. We gathered staff feedback on a, on a Google form. I looked at a little bit of that this evening, and from there, we'll begin to build responses. There's a, some common themes running through that that we're going to begin to address. We are on target to bring to the board a, a presentation on a, on a new middle school schedule in, at the second meeting in October. We have some things to look around at FTE impacts, contract impacts. Those are all things that are kind of in play right now, that we've, number of pieces we need to iron out before we bring it forward to you, but I want to just give a quick thank you to particularly our middle school assistant principals, who have been diligent on this from late, throughout the summer, and particularly over the last few weeks, in, in developing scenarios. So, at the elementary, we did a lot of work as well around, as I said earlier, around SRBI processes, which we continue to work on and improve across the district, and bringing in the math component and the behavior component at the elementary, and ramping that up, as well as at the elementary level, moving forward on the overview for staff around NGSS science, which is taking place at the elementary. Really, a lot of professional learning this year at the elementary level for implementation, more towards the second half of the year and into next year. more towards the second half of the year and into next year. And then finally, I just wanted to give the, an update on the deputy superintendent search. We have done interviews. As a result of those interviews, I decided to hold off on an appointment, and we will be, Ms. Goddismann with us tonight, will be serving as interim deputy superintendent through the remainder of the school year. Our intent is to post the position again in late winter, early spring, when we believe that one, there'll be a greater number of candidates in the pool as we move forward. But it also gives us some time to rethink how that position might work and function as part of a central office team, and we tend to, I intend to take full advantage of that time, so, that's it.
Any questions for Mr. Cummings? Well, we saw you on some social media, the fire department.
Right, thrive.
Can you tell us a little bit about?
Yes. The part of, each of our elementary schools is involved with the Sandy Hook Promise, and their program around essentially stop and say hello. And I went to McKinley yesterday as part of their project Monday, and McKinley has a previous commitment, an ongoing commitment with members of the Fairfield Fire Department around providing coats to students in need and that type of thing. And so they invited the fire department, Chief McCarthy was there as well. There are about eight or nine firemen, members of the staff, and if you think about the lobby at McKinley, so all these kids are getting off the bus, coming in, they're being dropped off, and they're coming through the doors, and like, there's this phalanx of adult males, like, forming this corridor that they have to go through. And it's Monday morning, they had a good weekend, and they're just looking at, there was quite a number of, you know, high fives and fist bumps and things, but some of these poor kids looked at us like, you know, "Who are you and why are you here? What are you doing to me?" I just barely woke up. But it was very fun. It was, it was, it was a lot of fun, and it was, you know, it just reminds you of what's important, you know, this greeting of kids, and that is, all of our schools are fabulous, they are all fabulous, but McKinley has a tradition every day of greeting kids as they come in off the bus. So whoever's available goes to the lobby. There just were more of us on Monday. And it was great. It was a lot of fun.
It was very nice to see. Any other questions? Oh. Committee liaison reports. Ms. Pitko?
So tomorrow night, SEPTA has a meeting, I believe it's at McKinley School. 7:30, Rob Mancusi, Special Education Director, will speak about this year's SPED initiatives, introduce his team of coordinators. Wednesday, October 30th, SEPTA is also having a Board of Education candidate forum at their meeting. It is Wednesday, October 30th, 7:30 PM, McKinley Library. And their grants are open now for the staff, if they want to start applying. And this past weekend, SEPTA members joined the Only You Foundation 5K, probably wore their shirts and were there to answer questions of parents.
Thank you. Any other? Ms. Jacobson?
Hi. So just something from the state. In 2017, the General Assembly enacted a task force to look at special education funding in the state, and how Connecticut funds special education. The final report was completed two years later this summer, and is now available. Along the way up, and keeping an eye on this, and we had talked about it with our delegation last year, and just in cave as well, so everyone is, has been keeping an eye on this and just tracking it. So I wanted to bring it to the board's attention. I sent it to, the report to Christine and Mr. Cummings yesterday, so they could look at what was in there. It basically is looking at different models of funding special ed in Connecticut. I don't want to, it's very large, it's very complicated, and I don't want to get into the weeds on it right now, but I just wanted to bring it to the public's attention and to this board's attention to, I'd rather us learn about it right now and get our hands around it, and not need to know it, if in case it goes nowhere, rather than something this large come up and us not be prepared for it while it's up in the air. So if anyone wants links to the mock model, the final report, it's about 170 pages, please let me know, but I just think it's something that the town and us should learn about now. Thanks.
Mrs. Gerber?
Nothing new on the Mill Hill Building Committee. In fact, their meeting tomorrow night, I just received notice, was, has been canceled. And just since I mentioned it at our last meeting, the Parks and Rec Commission did vote to approve Option 11 for the Marina renovation, and now that will be going to the other town bodies.
For me, just PTA Council had their first meeting. Mr. Cummings and I were both in attendance. They was very well-attended. They are, made a standing committee for Diversity Day. Osborne Hill, just a reminder, they're in the middle of their diversity week this week. They sent an invitation to the board, just in case anybody forgot to RSVP, if you're planning on attending, just let them know. Okay, that's it for me. Open board comment? Seeing none? Back to the public. Any public comment? Please come forward, hit your name, and now, just for the record.
Hi. Bonnie Rotelli, 1280 Merritt Street, and also District 4 RTM rep. So I had a chance to speak with some Stratfield families this weekend at the Stratfield Village Association Party in the Park, which was great. And people are very concerned about the results of the playground. So, and I'm sorry I missed the beginning of your update on the field updates and the Stratfield playground, but it sounded like there's a bit of splitting hairs on the definition of remediation, and that burying it in mulch is, is good enough for some. I realize that the results may or may not be from contaminated fill from the fill pile mess, and that you guys may actually have stumbled upon a problem stemming from the renovation of Stratfield some years ago. But regardless of the contamination, we now have an obligation to fix it. And given the recent fill pile scandal in town, I have the experience of knowing that my now-middle-school-aged daughters have spent years playing on contaminated fields throughout town. And now I have equal discomfort, knowing that they both have been playing on contaminated playgrounds for years as well. And there's nothing I can do about that. But we can change that for the current students and their parents, and ease their fears of what the potential exposure could be to their children by fixing the problem. So I'm asking you, again, to reconsider and do a full and complete remediation on that playground for these families. And these kids deserve it just as much as any other less-contaminated field or playground in town, and not burying it in mulch. Thank you.
Any other members of the public? Love to speak? Okay. Seeing none, motion to adjourn. Ms. Lieber? Seconded by Mrs. Gerber. All in favor? We adjourned, 7-0.